Any visitor or public comment at this time? Announcements, our next meeting is Tuesday, October 20th at 5:00 PM. And we're going to have a work session also in that day for our budget at 3:00 PM. We're going to be closed on Monday, October 12th in observance of what will soon be named Something Else, Columbus Day. Registration is full, totally full for our movie Hocus Pocus on Saturday, October 10th. So that'll be really exciting. We can't accept any walk-ins, I'm afraid. Leaf and yard waste recycling is the third Saturday of each month between 9:00 AM and 11:00. You drop off at the New Britain entrance, Road to Central Park. Regal, United Artists, Edwards, movie theater tickets are available at the, at our building here. And you can use them anytime, they do not expire. And then give the gift of life, the American Red Cross is doing a blood drive at our Activity Center on Friday, October 16th, November 6th. And then Friday, December 11th are all Fridays. And they have various times, so please register with, yeah, redcrossblood.org for your slot. It's a gift of life and it's excellent to do and if you can, it's a worthy cause. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular minutes from the September 15, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes? Is there a motion to approve?
I have one correction.
Okay.
On page two, under Police Chief, third paragraph down, there's a typo, last word. It says disband, it should be disbanded.
I didn't, I didn't hear your words, typo?
There's a typo, it's the third paragraph down, under Police Chief. It's the last word in that paragraph, it says disband, it should be disbanded.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Just a minor one.
Missing a date, all right, any other corrections, changes? Is there a motion, was there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then also for your consideration, the budget work session minutes for September 15th, everyone had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Corrections, changes?
One minor correction. Behind your name, Barbara Lyons, it says Vice Chairman, comma, Ryan Mannion, comma, Vice Chairman. So one of the Vice Chairman needs to go.
Okay, will that change?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, reports from the solicitor, oh wait, any, I'm sorry, any correspondents?
No.
Sorry, no reports from you?
Nothing that I won't discuss later in the agenda.
Chief?
Nothing to report.
Township engineer?
Nothing to report.
Director of Ops?
No, nothing to report.
Really? Manager?
Nothing that we won't discuss later.
Dan?
Yeah, I'll break the flow. Part, Water and Sewer Board, we are still looking for one additional member. And in addition to that, in our last meeting, we received the updated 537 Plan, which outlines the plans for our sewer program going forward for the next five, 10 years. So keep an eye out for that, we'll have that in a map for you soon.
Okay. Dan, you have anything?
I just want to say, we just had our budget session before this meeting. And I'm the liaison for the pension as well as the Ways and Means Boards. And I just wanted to thank them for all their hard work. It's a tremendous amount of work and they're really helping us out a lot. And as well as our planning, our planning meeting went very well. They're working on a lot of changes for our ordinances, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Dan?
There's also two openings on the TAB Committee, just so everyone did know. And also, thank you to everyone on the staff and all their hard work on the charting and explanations for budget. It's been wonderful.
Great, thank you, moving on. No unfinished business, and we have a land development return from Ashbridge.
I wanted like this to have Mr. Benner come in, but he walked the other direction.
Bill, come in. You're up, Bill.
While Mr. Benner is making his way to the podium, you'll recall, we discussed this matter at a prior meeting. And my recollection is there were two issues raised by the board. One is the issue of traffic warrants on 263. And the second issue had to do with the parking spaces. Board will note that with respect to the traffic issue, that we've included a provision that said that when the project is finished and fully occupied, there'll be an additional traffic study undertaken. And if warrants justify the traffic signal, that the cost will be allocated based upon the formula prepared by our traffic engineer. And the second part related to the parking, I'll let Mr. Benner bring the board up to date on what has transpired with respect to parking.
Thank you, Mr. Garten. Since the last meeting, as Mr. Garten has highlighted, the stipulation has been revised to include the provision about a new traffic study conducted at full occupancy. And if they show, and if that study shows the need for a warrant, then of cour, then of course, the, there will be a pro rata allocation pursuant to the formula. What also occurred since the last time that we convened is that the sketch plan, that part of the stipulation was revised. And that sketch plan now shows, showed 241 parking spaces offsite, onsite. Of those 241 parking spaces, 116 of them were located so that they would be closer to the main entrance to the building. And the plan was to install 116 of those spaces. And to install an additional 45 of those spaces to be set aside for employee parking and overflow parking, proposing that 80 of those parking spaces be held in reserve. Now, since then, I understand that there has been some staff discussion. And I spoke with Mr. Garten, and he inquired whether the owner of the project would be prepared and willing to make a further adjustment to the sketch plan and the implementing terms of the revised stipulation. So that it would show that there would be no less than one space for each dwelling unit, plus one additional space for each employee actually constructed and installed. And so consequently, if the project is built as planned, the number of installed parking spaces would be 124, one for each unit, plus one for each employee, or 20, for a total of 144, with 97 of those parking spaces to be held in reserve. And the precise location of those additional 97 spaces would be determined finally by the review of the land development plan. I spoke with Mr. Grasso about that suggestion. And I'm pleased to tell you this evening that Mr. Grasso has agreed and has directed Scott Mill, who's here this evening to make those changes, if the board is now satisfied that the, that the issue of parking meets with your requirements.
So, can I just recap? You're going to provide one actual parking space for each unit, and now additional 20 spaces for employees.
That is correct.
Okay, and then an additional 97 spaces you're going to hold in reserve.
That is also correct.
For a total of 241.
Correct.
Okay, it doesn't really read that way? And you just actually, you said, you said of those spaces, 97 will be held in reserve. What you mean is there's going to be an additional 97 to be held in reserve?
Perhaps I didn't make myself as clear as I would like.
I think, I don't think there's a question that you've been clear in your presentation. But I think that when we do the final tweaking of the stipulation, I think we want to be clearer that 144 are being constructed up front, 97 held in reserve, just to make sure there's no.
We're good?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, that's exactly what I intended. And if I, if I, if my explanation was confusing, I apologize.
No, that's okay, just take the top, look at the top paragraph on page seven and it, and just, it, it's easy to correct. I don't mean to, you know, I'm not wordsmithing, it's just, it's ambiguous the way it's written.
Sure, and what, the way, the way I was thinking of revising the top, the top of page seven and I guess the last line on page six, that, those five or six lines would come out and they'd be replaced with something that said, something like, "Of the 241 off-street parking spaces, Satterton Associates will construct no less than one parking space for each built residential unit, and no less than one parking space for each employee. Thus, if the Ashbridge at Furlong Project is built as planned, the number of required off-street parking spaces to be installed will be no less than 144 parking spaces. That is one for each residential unit and one for each of the planned 20 employees." The precise location of the balance of the parking, that is 97, will be set aside for reserved parking and will be determined prior to the township's approval of the land development plan.
Excellent.
Can I ask a?
Thank you.
Question? What about guest parking, someone comes to visit?
Sure.
How is that addressed?
That's a good question. The, the way the parking has been laid out is that 116 of the spaces are in very close proximity to the front entrance of the building. There's an additional parking area of 45 spaces. Those 45 spaces, those will be set aside for, 20 of which will be set aside for employees, 20, approximately 20 of those spaces will be set aside for overflow parking. And a couple of those spaces will be set aside for the individual units. It may be possible, Scott Mill is here, it may be possible to tweak the final design. Right now, the final design shows 116 such spaces in closer proximity to the building. It may be possible to tweak that design to make 124 of those spaces. Isn't that something that will be looked at? Scott wasn't able to make that determination prior to the meeting, but it'll certainly be looked at.
Can I ask about the percentage of handicapped that would be part of that parking as well as then regular parking? And, you know, how that could actually impact the total number that can park in that 116 or 124?
I think this is best answered by Scott Mill.
So, for 116 spaces that are in close proximity to the building, for ADA requirements, five handicap spaces will be required. But considering the users, we've got eight total handicap spaces there, so we've got more handicap spaces there than required. We also have two handicap spaces down in the lower area where, if that means ADA requirements up there.
Now Scott, when you're referring to down there, are you referring to the parking field with the 45 parking spaces? Yeah, that's the employee parking overflow parking area.
So, can I also be clear that if anybody's buying in, they cannot buy a second parking spot? So if there's, because you have 55 and older, they can only have one vehicle?
To be clear, the, the plan is that these would be rental units, not sale units?
But you still could need two cars, potentially, if they're 55 and older?
Well, the expectation is, is that the, is that most of the units are one-bedroom. The overwhelming majority are one-bedroom. And consequently, most of the, most of the occupants will probably only have one vehicle. I believe the stipulation has a, a number set out as the number of required of one-bedroom units. And I don't have that number at the tip of my tongue, but I think it's, I think it's in the low 100s.
Well, the other thing is too, if the events are such that we notice that more parking is necessary, there's going to be a mechanism for those, all or par of those 97 to be constructed.
Right.
So I think the purpose of reserved parking is to cover a need if it arises, but not to create a bunch of blacktop if you don't need it. So, when we go through the land development process, we'll develop the criteria as well as the guarantees.
The other point that I did not highlight in my opening comments was that the, following the last appearance before this board, the stipulation now includes a better definition of the onsite amenities to be provided. And those onsite amenities are... Those onsite amenities include a, an indoor barber shop, beauty salon, doctor nurse office, fitness therapy area, and an activity center, and the intent of which would be to lessen the need for vehicles. In addition, although not in the stipulation, although part of the program, is that the, there will be event service provided to the residents for those who, who want to go into town, go to the movies, do that sort of thing.
These additional amenities, are they only accessible by residents, or can people come in from, from the public?
These, this is for residents only. The, the intent is not to have, not to have, to create commercial space for the, for this project. The intent is to have this project be self-contained to support the residents who will be residing there, not to have them open to the public.
Okay, any other questions?
Can I go back to the handicapped? If we identify that you need, if they identify they need more, because just based on what you're looking to do, how does that work, Jeff, just from an ADA perspective and need perspective?
They have to meet a minimum number of ADA required spaces, and they exceed that. But they're going, I assume that they have a population that's going to require more handicap spaces.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
They're going to have to, we can include in the stipulation that it may require additional construction of handicap spaces too.
Well.
So that, because you're right, with an older population, that may not be enough, but they're meeting ADA requirements.
Right, I understand they're meeting ADA, but based on the population in which you're looking to market to and to rent to, I think we're going to, we're going to automatically run into an issue.
So I think we can factor that into the stipulation.
The second amended and restated stipulation, that what we're talking about.
And if I could just add to that, this is, this is a good conversation to have. And I, and you're raising, you're raising important points for planning purposes. But this is the type of, type of amenity or need that's almost self-enforcing. Because if the number of residents are higher than anticipated who have the need for handicap parking, it will be in the ownership's interest to provide those amenities for their residents. So in many respects, this is almost self-enforcing. And there isn't, the plan does provide for 97 parking spaces to be held in reserve. And if that means that some of those parking spaces have to be converted into, into additional parking spaces for the residents to account for the fact that the handicap parking spaces will be bigger, of course, that'll be done. There's no objection to including that term, to including the terms in the stipulation that would give the township the right to trigger the need for additional park, handicap parking. But what I'm saying is that that's something that the, whoever the operator is, is going to be very attuned to that need.
I, I think when you talk about handicap parking spots, we, typically you'll see in a parking lot, a handicap stall may be a regular-sized stall within close proximity to a building. That's also considered a handicap. The eight that you're referencing, are they oversized to accommodate lifts and stuff like that?
Wheelchairs? Excuse me, Scott, you have to get to the, you have to use your microphone.
So, so for ADA requirements, of every eight handicap spaces you provide, one has to be van-accessible. With that, the space itself is eight feet wide, the loading area is another eight feet wide. And you can have two spaces sharing the same loading area. And then beyond that, the handicap spaces require a loading area of five feet in width.
All right, so the, so the eight that you're proposing?
So of the eight, and they're the, the eight closest to the, the front door. Two on either side of the front door are basically van-accessible. So there are four van-accessible, or they don't have to be van-accessible, I mean, but they allow for it. And then there are four additional that are standard, eight plus five.
Okay, so for 124 units, you have four units that will have wheelchair accessible for vans?
Correct.
And then you'll have four regular ones?
Correct.
Okay.
And then down in the lower lot, there are two spaces that would be standard ADA with the five-foot loading area.
You said they're the closest to the building?
Yes.
Okay, of the other 100 and whatever odd remaining resident parking spots, are all the curbing accessible for wheelchairs to get across, even if they don't have them? And walkers and every, every type of walker you could have, whether it be a cane or a?
We, we haven't fully designed the curb reveal yet, but that, that could certainly be taken into account. All the parking area is proposed to be curbed to some level. We've got a sidewalk that runs from the, the front door all the way through. Landscaped islands in the middle to gain access to the parking on either side. So if people get out of their car at the farthest spot, they can walk around and gain access to the sidewalk that runs through the, the middle of the parking lot. And, and that would certainly, would be handicap accessible, would be the, the press curb with the truncated dome mat in front of it for visibility purposes.
Kind of like crosswalks, where you're going to just?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Are there any residents here who have any questions or comments?
One behind you.
Okay, hearing none?
Raise your hand.
Scott, can you give the, I missed you. Do we have another microphone?
Scott, perhaps, perhaps you can share yours with Chelsea?
Do you feel comfortable sharing that microphone, that's fine? Thank you for your consideration.
So, I wanted to bring up just my concerns as a resident, not, you know, in general, talking about the stipulations that we're discussing today. But I just wanted to continue to bring up what my concerns are and the neighbors that I've spoken to as well, in terms of the traffic flow on Rogers Road. To no surprise for you guys, you've heard this time and time again. But the difficulty that we've had is, we've been to all of the Planning Commission meetings for this, and we've brought up these concerns time and time again. What has happened, at least for me specifically, is we've brought up a Planning Commission, we're told to bring it to Traffic Advisory. Traffic Advisory kind of kicks it back to Planning Commission, and now we're here with the Board of Supervisors. So what I want to make clear to everyone is just this reminder as well, is that what our concern is, is where the traffic is, the traffic is exiting onto Rogers. And then we're looking at additional traffic patterns on Rogers, which leads to more speeding, because we already have a speeding issue, as is. It's already a safety concern in terms of people walking their dogs, walking with their kids, everything along those lines. What we've talked about and we've discussed in depth at the Planning Commissions is figuring out how we exit onto Rogers Road, that we could force people to go to exit to York instead of being able to drive up Rogers towards Spring Valley. Again, that's something that I don't want to let this plan continue to go further along. We'll say, well, we're not at that part of the design phase yet, or we're not at that part of the decision-making yet. And then before we know it, we're at that stage, decisions are made, and things just keep moving along. So I guess my concern as a resident is to reiterate the fact that we really need to discuss, we've talked in depth about 55-plus, what that looks like for the number of individuals that will have vehicles onsite. I know that they've quoted statistics for other sites that are similar to this. But those are sites that have access to better and different public transportation, which we know for the area that we live in, for Bucks County and Doylestown specifically, and also this area, that's not the case. So if we provide Doylestown DART, I know that's something that we have available. But we do need to consider the volume of vehicles we will have onsite. Obviously, if we were concerned about the number of parking spaces, we should also be concerned about that traffic. I fully respect saying, let's do a traffic study at the end, because then it's, then you know for sure, right? But again, it goes back to that, well, once you're there and these decisions have already been made, it's much harder to come back and change a design or change how we exit onto Rogers or what that curb looks like. So, my argument would be to say that I would love to work with everyone in terms of the design for this, to say, what can we do to keep people safe, to keep the volume of traffic on a neighborhood street low, which will in turn keep the, the speeding low, which will help Chief Logan and his officers getting multiple complaints from me every week about speeding. So, that's kind of me reiterating that time and time again. So that's why I would ask that we please look into that in depth. If we can get the Grasso team to say, hey, you know what, let's force them so that they can't turn right onto Rogers. And then it has to be some type of, you know, I don't know the proper terminology, but whatever the curb has to look like so that they have to turn left, so that they have to exit in that direction, I think that that would be a best-case scenario.
Bill, do you want to comment on this? Because I remember one iteration of this design where there, there was no exit, there was only one way into that complex. There's no exit from that complex onto Rogers Road.
Yes, I agree that this issue was discussed at considerable detail with the Planning Commission. I believe there were at least two meetings, perhaps two and a half, perhaps three, that focused exclusively on traffic. And at the conclusion of those discussions, the Planning Commission recommended that the, that the design of the driveway into the project from Rogers Road provide for a no road, a no right-turn traffic sign to restrict the right-turn exit movements onto Rogers Road. And that's written into the stipulation. Now, if we, once we get into the final land development plan review, if there, if there is a better way to implement that, that restriction apart from the, a no right-turn traffic sign, certainly, Mr. Grasso would take those recommendations to heart and would do, make a good faith effort to come to an understanding. But for now, the stipulation does include language that restricts traffic movements exiting the project, turning to the right.
Mr. Benner, can you refresh my recollection, how do you get into the complex? Can you get into it from both north and southbound on York Road, or is it just southbound?
I'd like, with your permission, I'd like to hand that question over to the traffic consultant, who's more familiar with the traffic circulation than I am. I don't want to mislead the board by inadvertently saying something wrong. So if, Mark, if you could come forward and address that question?
This is Mark Roth. The, the movements to and from the site, coming southbound on York Road, you'll be able to turn right into the site. You'll also be able to make a right turn out of the site, onto York Road. Traveling northbound on York Road, you'd have to turn left onto Rogers and then right turn into the site. And then leaving that access, as Mr. Benner indicated, you can only make a left turn out of the site onto Rogers Road.
So you can drive, I'm going to call it a southern direction from Rogers Road and make a left into your complex? That would be a permitted turning movement?
Could you make a?
If I'm coming from Spring Valley Road on Rogers Road towards the site, you'll be permitted to make a left into the complex, is that correct?
Yes, there's no, there's no restriction to that movement at all, as currently written in the stipulation.
All right. So the only, the only question that I think that from a traffic safety standpoint and a, to, in the interest of the residents on Rogers Road, they can make, personally, I think that it might be, is it possible? is it possible to restrict left-turn movements into the complex from Rogers Road in an attempt to keep as much traffic off of Rogers Road between the complex and Spring Valley Road? Basically, creating a loop around York Road, Rogers Road, and into the complex, and no further from the complex towards Spring Valley Road. Is it possible to create that type of traffic flow?
So generally, you're asking, is it possible to somehow design the access either with the physical design of the access or signing?
Let me ask you a question. Would you be opposed to the Township Traffic Commission posting Rogers Road no-left turn into your complex with signage?
I, sorry, I can't, I can't agree to that. I'm not the owner of the site. But if you asked, your previous question is, could the access be designed that way? I can answer that question, and the answer to that question is yes. But would the applicant, or would the owner be agreeable to that? I cannot answer that question.
Let me just add to that. The traffic study that Mark Roth prepared, and that was exhaustively reviewed by the traffic engineer, showed a distribution of traffic movements coming to the site and exiting the site during peak hours. And when we put, when we look at the traffic entering the site, either during peak hours or other than peak hours, the majority of the traffic coming onto the site are going to be deliveries for the residents, for the kitchen, things of that nature, and for employees. The expectation is that most of those vehicle trips will come to the site through York Road, either coming from the north or from the south. And consequently, utilizing the Rogers Road, using the Rogers Road entrance would be quite limited. Most of the movements will be through the project's main entranceway. The residents themselves are living there. This is not a situation where people come on a daily basis. So the traffic movement associated with the residents will be quite limited.
May I ask, is this the study that was just done in April?
The...
The one you're referencing?
No. The traffic study that Mr. Benner's referencing and the traffic study that was prepared and reviewed by the township at length was completed in April of 2018.
2018?
Correct. It was done in April.
There was another one in April during COVID, that's why I was asking as well.
Not for, not by this team.
Okay.
I just, I want the board to understand, I'm trying to remain as neutral as possible when I make this discussion, but what I can tell you is statistically over the last 10 years that there has been a speeding and a traffic issue on Rogers Road. Any increase, whether it be deliveries and/or additional residents from the community, is going to have an impact on it. So I just want you to be aware of that. Whatever you guys decide as far as your vote, whether or not to approve it or whatever, that's up to you. I just want you to be aware of the situation that's currently out there. And with additional traffic, it cannot get better. Okay? And that's part of the reason why I asked over the last several months to re-modify the Traffic Advisory Commission into the Local Traffic Advisory Commission so that we can look at these issues. That's all I want you to keep in consideration when you make your decisions here.
And certainly from the owner's point of view, the owner recognizes that Doylestown Township has control over its public roadways. And so whatever signage, whatever restrictions, whatever enforcement mechanisms that you elect to pursue, that's something that is exclusively within your domain. What the applicant here is seeking is approval of a project that will fit in to the fabric of this community. And the owner has tried to meet all of the reasonable requests that the advisory agencies have recommended.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that already is an approved stipulation for a commercial project. So the traffic is significantly less than was in the original approved plan.
Can you repeat that?
What I was saying is that there already is an approved stipulation that has a commercial, large commercial improvements on the site. I don't recall the exact number of square feet, but certainly significant more parking, or probably more traffic than exists now, so with the new proposal. So I don't want, we don't want to lose track of history a little bit, too.
Wasn't that proposal the one where it was only one way into the complex off Rogers Road?
Yes, but there was a traffic light also at the entrance.
If we're gonna, and just for discussion purposes, if the Temple Judea is not permitted to make a left turn out of their complex, how can we make a right turn out of their complex?
Well, there's no right turns.
Okay, but you're, the whole thing is, the whole thing with Temple Judea is to try to get people out towards York Road, not in towards Spring Valley. That was the purpose of the no-left turn?
The stipulation says no-right turns out.
Right, but you're still getting traffic in.
Coming in.
You may get left turns in, that people may be coming from the neighborhoods or up that direction, and we'll have to deal with that when we see what the plans look like.
I guess my, there's really no reason for residents of this facility to have to travel for Rogers, on Rogers Road, because they're not a resident of Rogers Road.
They probably won't, but you know who's going to travel on them? There's FedEx and the trash trucks and those, those service providers are going to be on Rogers Road. And that's just as bad. So it's like, it should be only like, no through traffic, local residents only, I don't know.
Well, if the owner is open to it, having a physical deterrent to make the left into the property, I think would be the best option. Because signage, people can choose to ignore that if they want.
Physical deterrents, so they can't make a left and they only make a left out.
Well, I think they...
And no left out.
No, they can make a left out.
Right, left in.
Make a right and a left out.
Correct.
Correct. I mean, I think that would be the preferred, in my case, that would be the preferred way to handle it rather than signage.
You'll come up with something?
Well, I would...
Well, you know, I think this is a conversation, and mindful of what Chelsea had mentioned, I think this is something that will sort itself out during the land development approval process. But we don't get there until the board authorizes the project.
We have a question from one of the viewing members of the audience.
We actually had two questions come in, but it seems that you're already having the conversation about the traffic. So Linda Leach from 310 Valley Drive called in to ask about the traffic, the service road that was originally discussed. She said, why can't we have the agreed-upon service road, which was a one-way? It was apparently going to be one-way in, either to exit to 313 or 263 safely. This would allow people from the synagogue to use it as well. So I'm not sure if you already discussed this.
I think that's the old plan, that had the access from 313, am I right?
That's correct.
That was the commercial development.
And if I can interject one more thing, and then I'll be quiet. I think if you end up doing my proposal and only permitting left turns out of their complex on Rogers Road towards York Road, when they do their study on York Road at the end of this project and you start seeing traffic, you're going to see a greater volume, and you're going to have a greater warrant to actually put some type of signalization there.
Right.
If you don't limit the right, to restrict right turns on the Rogers Road, everybody's going to turn Rogers Road, and you're not going to beat the limits for York Road.
Exactly. All right, so that's an old plan that's not in effect right now, or is not in effect. Andrea, was there another question?
There was. Frederick Frieser from 710 Edison Furlong, he had called with, it was a question about the electric vehicles that you had mentioned. He said, with the move to electric vehicles, will they have charging stations available for residents?
That's a good idea, have charging stations for vehicles in your plan, Bill.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm obviously not prepared to address that question.
There are becoming more electric vehicles, and you might have residents that have electric...
He mentioned he had an electric vehicle.
It's a good thing to add.
It's certainly something that we can bring to Mr. Grasso's attention. I don't know that we need that degree of granularity for the stipulation.
He's going to meet the needs of his community, so if left people with their cars, he's going to have to put a station in.
Thank you for those comments.
Does it have to be in the stipulation?
No.
All right, so we have some ingress and egress issues and electric cars and... To get this approved tonight...
Of course. No, it should turn on.
Turn on. Yep, you're good. Mr. Benner, would you share the microphone with...
Happy to.
So my only question was about discussing, once we do the traffic study, and whether or not we will be able to place a light or a traffic signal at Rogers and New York. Will we have limitations from PennDOT based on where that location is in comparison to where the other lights are located on York Road? Because then the consideration is too, if we're saying now, we are anticipating that if we force everyone to go out to York, or anticipating that traffic study to come back positive, that we will need a light, then will we be fighting PennDOT saying that, well, that light is going to be too close to the Edison Furlong and New York Road light? And if that's a consideration that we need to think about, do we need to go back and say, well, then we need a light at the entrance of this site, which was initially discussed when this plan was proposed? So just throwing that out there as well, because again, I don't want us to go through all of this, say, yep, we're going to conduct a traffic study, we decide we need a light, and then we're fighting with PennDOT.
Okay. Our township traffic engineer?
Just wanted to answer the question regarding the traffic signal and whether PennDOT would allow it or where they would allow it. The last time we talked to PennDOT, and Mark Roth from McMahon, I believe, was involved with those discussions as well. PennDOT had agreed, they may change their mind, but they had agreed to one signal being added somewhere between Edison Furlong Road and Swamp Road. If it was at the, where it's located with the old development, there was a signal that was approved there. If that's not there, they had also previously with the Temple agreed to providing a signal with the Temple warranted at Edison Furlong. So there has been that discussion with PennDOT. And just to put it in perspective, though, when we looked at the development meeting the warrants for a traffic signal, the traffic volumes that are being generated by this development as presented to us in their traffic study would really have to be about tenfold increase on Rogers Road to meet a signal warrant. Just to put it in perspective.
Okay. Thanks, Matt Johnson. Any other questions back there, Andrea? Nope. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, what are these two amendments we have?
Well, I guess the...
Second amended restated stipulation.
Your motion to approve, the motion to be to approve the amended stipulation with the following caveats, that 144 parking spaces will be constructed up front with 97 kept in reserve, with the understanding that the number of handicap spaces within the reserved spaces will be discussed during the land development process. And continuing to say no-right turns out of the project onto Rogers Road, and that we will discuss and consider during the course of the land development process, no-left turn in to the project from Rogers Road.
Was there something about handicap parking?
I did, I mentioned that, handicap parking.
All right, with those caveats, is there a motion to approve the second amended restated stipulation agreement regarding this parcel, Grasso, Soudren and Associates?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, any questions or comments? Calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, you're good to go.
Thank you. And just to give me a little bit of guidance, the revisions proposed, I'm presuming that I should clear them with your solicitor, and then he in turn will present the revised...
The board for signature, yes.
For signature, very well. Thank you for your patience. It's been a long journey. I'll give Mr. Grasso a call.
How long has it been, like 13 years? How long has it been?
Well, just for this phase of the project, it began in February of 2017.
Wow.
If you keep talking, Mr. Benner, I'm going to suggest that the board move to change their mind.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Garten. But you know, when the chair asks such a prescient question, I feel the need to address it.
You're absolutely right, thank you.
So good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is the Park and Rec Center MKSD Agreement. It's been reviewed and revised, and what's before us is the final contract with amendments and all incorporated.
All the amendments suggested by all persons that participated in reviewing it.
All right, is there a motion to approve the KSD contract for architecture for the community center?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second. Any questions or further comments?
Yes, in subsection 1.1.6, it says the owners anticipated sustainable objective for the project, and then it says identify. It said not applicable at the time of the agreement, and the subsection below it also discusses sustainable objectives. With the Ready for 100 that we've gone over and approved moving forward with, I was curious whether we would want to add some sort of wording in there about sustainability with the project?
Yes, when we met with the architects initially, we talked to them about having green aspects included, and we will be sharing with them at our kickoff meeting the Ready for 100 resolution, and for them to find ways to incorporate green into the building, but not go with that LEED certified specifically, because we found out with this building that that can add cost.
You know, I had the same, when I read through all this, I said, there's no mentioning of our, you know, our goal for...
It's mentioned, yeah.
So apparently in the RFP, it was, it's in there that it's got to be green-friendly, sustainable, that kind of thing. It's in the RFP.
The RFP can incorporate into the agreement as well.
So it's there.
Great, okay, so just not in the subsection?
No, and I had the same question, so...
Okay.
But I know that it's there, and I know that it's a consideration.
Okay, so that, just to be clear, I just want to make sure that it's not that we're just doing different types of lighting and different types of insulation. I want to look a little bit further than that when it comes to sustainability with the building.
Opportunity.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to build it into the plan, the best they can?
Okay.
All right, there's a motion and a second, calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and then PennDOT traffic signal applications with resolutions. Do I have to do each one of these? Where are they?
You can do them all collectively.
Let's do all. Okay, so there's Eastern Road and Doylestown Point, there's Ames House Road and Barren Plaza, and then there's Eastern Road and Ames House Road. Application for signal, well, approvals and alterations and...
Modifications.
Modifications, really. All right, is there a motion to approve the three signal applications?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Next, we have got zoning hearing board applications. Stephanie, what do you recommend for the first one?
The first one I'm recommending that we actually, all three, to leave to the zoning hearing board.
Okay, so be it. And then the next one is Greenway, 12 Greenway.
Again, leaving that to the zoning hearing board as well.
And finally, 2135 Turk.
Leaving that to the zoning hearing board as well.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We're next meeting on October 20th at 5:00. Our budget will, session will occur at 3:00 on October 20th. We're going to be closed Monday, October 12th, for that holiday. Registration is full for the fall movie on October 12, 10th, excuse me. Sorry, there's no walk-ins. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Sunday, uh, third Saturday of each month, from 9:00 to 11:00 at the entrance, uh, New Britain entrance to Central Park. And we've got movie tickets that can be used anytime from Regal United Artists and Edwards Movies Theaters. And then the Gift of Life American Red Cross Blood Drive is happening on October 6th, November 6th, October 16th, November 6th, and December 11th. Please go to redcrossblood.org to register. All the blood is going to be drawn down at our activity center. Anything else? We're good? We're adjourned, thank you very much. Please have a...